Good afternoon, my name is Chris Leek and I'm Chair of the City County Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 9th meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. I think I see Councilmember McIntosh. Oh, good seeing both of you, alright. My name is, our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There will be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning requests, however, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning requests, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the request. Before addressing the planning board today, we will need your name, address, and zip code for the record if you're speaking. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the October 12th and October 26th meeting. Is there a motion?
I move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous. Now going to call on Mr. Brian Wilson to review the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Welcome to our penultimate meeting of the 2024 year. I always like to use that word because it's a fun $10 word. So something that's not on the agenda for tonight, I just want to let you know that case W3597, that was automatically withdrawn. Originally, that was going to be continued to your December meeting, but they have withdrawn that case, so we will not, you won't be seeing that in December. Items B5, that's case W3603, and item C3, that's PBR 2023-21, that's the Bethania Forest cases. Those are both being automatically continued to your December 14th public hearing. This item is now moving on to a public hearing, as well as this item, and item B3. So we'll be moving straight on to item B4, that's case W3602. Petitioner is Hillcrest Property Development LLC, requesting a rezoning from NUS and HBS to GBS. This is a 1.7 acre site located at the southwest intersection of South Stratford Road and Hillcrest Center Drive. This is in the Hillcrest Activity Center. You can see the property is split zone, HBS and MUS there, and all surrounding MUS properties there to the west, south, and north, and then GI Zone property across South Stratford Road. This is the aerial, you can see the, most of the undeveloped parcels have been mass graded. You can actually see a portion of the MUS, throw my pointer on here. In the 22 aerial, you can see that was mass graded, or excuse me, graded, that's where the B safe is going to be located. This is the area plan land use recommendation map. It does recommend commercial land uses here. And this is the proposed site plan. Just to let you know, the original MUS zoning for Hillcrest did not allow for this particular use. That's one of the reasons they're coming here, also to clean up the zoning line. Site plan depicts a proposed 2,500 square foot restaurant with drive-through and additional 500 square feet of outdoor seating area. The plan shows all required sidewalks along Hillcrest Center Drive and Winter Haven Lane, with an additional internal connection to the medical center site to the southeast, which will provide excellent pedestrian connectivity, which was one of the hopes of the Hillcrest, the original Hillcrest rezoning. Petitioner showing all required street yards with those required plantings. Proposed parking area and drive-through lane meet all minimum parking requirements for the proposed use. And here are the proposed elevations showing a primarily brick exterior, which meets the original materials conditions of the Hillcrest zoning in 2003, and therefore will be generally compatible in character to the rest of the development. The site plan does meet UDO requirements and staff is supportive of the approval of this request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3602.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, our next item will be item C1, that's PBR 2023-19. This is the Oak Summit Learning Center, requesting a child daycare center in a GBL zoning district. It's a approximately 2.19 acre site located at the northwest intersection of Commerce Court and Laura Avenue. As you can see on the location map, the zoning district extends around this one RS9 property, but all of the other surrounding property is zoned HB, just to give you a little extra context. This is the proposed site plan. You can see the existing child daycare center on the northern section of the property. That's offsite from the request, an existing playground. Petitioner is proposing to extend an internal private drive through this property and then having a driveway connection onto Laura Avenue. And then they're going to reutilize, propose to reutilize this existing house to add up to 50 additional children, with a separate play area and then an internal pedestrian connection between the proposed and the existing play areas. They're showing all other required parking and loading areas. Site plan does meet the UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is item C2, that's PBR 2023-20. This is the Duke Energy Substation off of Ransom Road. That's a 30.6 acre site located at the northwestern intersection of Ransom Road and Young Acres Farm Road. Just as a reminder, this was the portion of the River Rock PRD to the west there where they had to petition to withdraw that section of the PRD, so this is actually that coming forward for the substation. And this is the proposed site plan. You can see they're showing it to be the pad and the substation area to be centrally located, with the majority of the site to remain wooded and undisturbed. They are showing a internally, an internal driveway that will access Young Acres Farm Road to the nor, site plan north there. As a part of our review, staff recommended an additional condition, that they document the existing condition of Young Acres Farm Road. It's a small ribbon paved road and they're going to be grading quite a bit back here. So they're going to document that before beginning construction and at the end, if there's any damage to that, then they'll either have to repair it or provide funds to repair it before it begins operations. Again, as this is a low density development, they're not required to actively manage stormwater, so no proposed stormwater devices. Site plan does meet UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? It was a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous.
Alright, and then last item on the consent agenda tonight is item B1, that's preliminary subdivision 2023-137, the terrace at Quail Haven. District requesting a 99 lot preliminary subdivision and an RS9 zoning district. It's an approximately 60.49 acre site located at the northern terminus of Quail Haven Lane. I'm sure everybody knows where this is, but the IP zone area there, that's Salem Lake Park there, and then the RS9 portion there, that's all large flat residential with an RMS 8S zone area to the east there. And just to lend a little history on this, a preliminary approval was granted for 104 lot subdivision last year. They're requesting to redesign this. The other street design was more curvilinear, with obviously five more lots, and they're proposing a slightly different stormwater location, so staff didn't feel comfortable taking care of that staff letter at the staff level, that's why you're seeing it here today. Otherwise, the proposed plan does meet UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this request. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? It was a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign.
Mr. Chairman will now go by the case B1, case W3598, and we'll hear Nick Smith will give the staff presentation.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. It's afternoon, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nick Smith, and as Chris mentioned, this is case W3598. The petitioner is the Richard Hoyt Jones Revocable Trust. It is a 36.2 acre site on both sides of Teague Road, east of Old Lexington Road, and the request is for a special use rezoning from RS9 to RM5 special use. Here is a map of its location in reference to the different GMAs. It is located in GMA 3, down in the southeast ward of the city. Here's a location map of the property, the, let me switch to laser pointer, one second. This creek that does bisect the property is Fiddler's Creek. Teague Road falls right here, and there's a southern portion and a northern portion to the development that we'll be talking about. Here's an aerial image of the site. As you can see, there are primarily single-family residential homes to the north, west, and south of the property, as well as internal. This property that it kind of surrounds like a horseshoe is also a single-family home. There is multifamily, there's a multifamily, two multifamily developments to the east, right over here. There is one vacant residential home on the subject property located about right there on Teague Road. This is the area plan. The area plan does recommend single-family residential uses at a density of 0 to 8 dwelling units per acre. The proposed development is below that 8 dwelling units per acre area plan recommendation for the site. Comes in at about 2.94 dwelling units per acre. The following are some site photos and sign photos. This is looking west along Teague Road. The northern portion of development is to the right. You can see in the background that vacant residential house that was mentioning earlier. This is the same sign, looking in the other direction, looking east along Teague Road. Northern portion of development is to the left. Same perspective, this is looking across the street of Teague Road at the southern portion of the development. You can see it is at a grade above the, it is a, sorry, the grade of the site is above Teague Road at this point, for the southern portion. This is a little further down Teague Road to the east, at the second sign. This is looking west along Teague Road. The southern portion of the property is to the left. And this is looking east along Teague Road at the same location. The southern portion of the property is to the right. This is the site plan for the proposed development. These two green areas, right here and right here, are the two required, before I begin, I do go into detail later about the northern portion and the southern portions, this kind of a general overview real quick. So again, the green areas are the two required common recreation areas that have pedestrian connections to their respective portions of the site. A stub street right here is being provided to the east in case this property ever develops. NC DOT comments, just pulled straight from their comments in GeoCivics, dependent on the current traffic of Teague Road, left and right turn lanes may be required eventually when the development comes in for commercial permitting. Additionally, NC DOT does not support a crosswalk across Teague Road because it is a 55 mile per hour speed limit road right now, so crosswalk would be a little dangerous. Additionally, right now, there are no sidewalks proposed along Teague Road. Additionally, this is a, the overall site is density neutral for the area plan recommendations and the zoning district. The current recommendation, like I said earlier, is 8 dwelling units per acre or less, and the overall development does come in at 2.94 dwelling units per acre. Now we're going to zoom in on the northern portion of the site. The green area, again, is that common open, or common recreation area. It's a 4,000 square foot common recreation area, and a little bit more detail just about the stub street here to the east. This northern portion also meets the density requirements independently of the southern section. The density of this section is roughly 1.76 dwelling units per acre, counting in as well to all the property to the north that is part of the Fiddler's Creek floodplain. For the southern portion, the, there is an 8,000 square foot common recreation area that is connected by pedestrian access to the rest of the southern development. One thing that staff did want to bring to attention is that we do recognize the compactness of these townhomes on the end of the cul-de-sac. However, there's no UDO requirement forcing any spreading out. This is meeting UDO requirements, as is. Trash collection, however, isn't going to be an issue as the sanitation department will be requiring a dumpster instead of individual pickup for this development. The southern portion also independently meets those density requirements for the zoning district. Again, the recommendation is 8 dwelling units per acre or less. The southern portion comes in at about 5.96 dwelling units per acre, so both portions independently meet those density requirements. The following four slides are just elevations of the proposed townhomes. In summary, the request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030. The request is consistent with the density recommendations of the South Suburban Area Plan, but inconsistent regarding the housing product being proposed as single-family residential is proposed from the area plan, and townhomes are being proposed as part of the development. The proposed development is density neutral in context of the area plan recommendations and the existing zoning. The request serves as a transitional development between the multifamily uses to the east and the single-family residences to the north, southwest, and internal inside the horseshoe. So in conclusion, the site plan does meet UDO requirements and staff does recommend approval, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Nick, the capacity at level of service needs 15,8 according to your report, right?
Yes, sir.
You've got 2,400 now in place, 2,400 daily trip count, is that?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, and just reading from the report, and I'm sort of...
No, it's okay, I just have it in front of me. Actually, one second.
Existing zoning would allow another about 1,700 trips a day, right?
Correct.
This project's going to be 550, 560 trips per day, so 560 added to the 24 puts us at about 3,000 trips per day on a 15,800 road. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. Thank you very much.
Question, where? You said they will require dumpsters?
Yes, sir.
Is there room?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there room as far as impervious surface? They're not close to their impervious surface, so...
No, ma'am. Let me go back to the...
I didn't see them on the site plan.
Yeah, my apologies. I will point them out real quick. So this little carve-out right here on the site plan is the dumpster for the southern portion, and I believe the northern portion is this little carve-out right here as well.
Did, okay, thank you.
They do have little carve-outs for those dumpsters.
Does DOT determine the requirement for a turn lane? Is that who?
Yes, they provided some notes. Let me find my slide, one second. NC DOT's comments were just dependent on the current traffic load on Teague. Left and right turn lanes may be required at time of permitting. So that's what we were given.
There's certain warrants they look at to determine whether or not they're needed at time of permitting.
And then there's an HOA that covers the cost of the dumpsters and whatever other road cake. Okay.
And the only related question I have is relative to the DOT comments. Are they far enough along to know if the subdivision of each of the lots sits far back, far enough back off of Teague Road for a future right-of-way?
That is not something we've received comments on, sir. I apologize.
So I would assume not, then.
And again, it's probably not even on anyone's radar as far as any future improvements, given the fact that it is probably operating at a very comfortable level of service. A, there's probably not any plans at this point for any future road projects.
Right, right. And these are public, these are dedicated roads? These are going to be public roads?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
So they're maintained by them? Okay, thank you.
96 total units?
Correct.
Yes.
It's 24 4-unit townhomes.
It's 52 in the north and 44 in the south.
Any additional questions for Mr. Smith? Alright, thank you. So we will have a public hearing on this. As a reminder, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. As you approach the podium, please state your name, address, and zip code for the record. We have Brad Cole and also Tim Tucker.
Ladies and gentlemen, David B. Cole, Brad, 582 Saddle Chase Lane, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27107.
Thank you.
My partner and one other partner who is not here have put the property under contract with the family. Would you please raise your hands? These folks represent the Richard Jones Revocable Trust. I believe Mr. Jones has actually passed away since we put the property under contract, but they're here, the contract endures, their desire to sell it to us endures, and our desire to develop it per the site plan endures. We have worked with staff, we do think we have a reasonable site plan that's largely in conformity with the area plan recommendations, and we have their recommendation for approval. We are not inexperienced nor non-local developers. We've done quite a bit of work in the Triad area. We can and will do a good job on this site, sell it to a reputable builder, sell the pads for a reputable builder who will provide housing, which is much needed. We all read articles and see articles. I have one published, North Carolina State Government Statistics, that we need 1 million single-family units, be that a townhome condominium or standalone single-family dwelling over the next 10 years. That's 1,000 per county per year for the next decade. Some counties need more, some counties, perhaps the tier of counties along the Virginia border will get virtually none. But we have a desperate shortage of, I don't like the term affordable housing, I don't like the term workforce housing. We have a desperate shortage of workforce housing for people coming to jobs which are being created in our great state. This project is one of several we have underway in the Triad, and it is one of a type of housing which we continue to see demand and need for. We respectfully request your consideration and approval of this plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cole?
Just one. Could you estimate the longest distance someone's going to have to walk from their front or back door to the nearest dumpster with their trash?
I'm not in possession of a scale site plan at this moment. I would, 700, 800 feet, perhaps. Can the staff help me with that question?
He's checking at the moment.
That seems to be in the ballpark.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're close.
Staff agrees with me, sir.
They're probably going to drive.
Their trash.
Probably.
Throw it in the trunk.
I mean, have you met people today?
The dumpster requirement is something that came up during the site plan review process with the various interdepartmental action, interaction that goes on. We anticipated individual trash cans, these will be city streets, but that came from sanitation and we're certainly willing to provide further request.
And, and a lot of times, because of some existing issues that have been experienced with rollout containers on townhome projects in tight situations like this, especially in cul-de-sacs, that has become a, pretty much a city policy related to that. Again, because if you look at that cul-de-sac where you have, you know, the one on the south side where you have, you know, 12 driveways and very limited area in between those driveways, what ends up happening is the trash containers end up being out in the street and they get hit, and it's just, it's difficult for collection. So that's become a standard practice.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Cole.
Sir, thank you.
How much time left?
10 minutes.
Alright, 10 minutes. Mr. Tim Tucker?
Tim Tucker, 342 Oak Grove Church Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27107.
Thank you.
Just a few things, you know, this, this property has been in my father-in-law, I'm here with my wife and sister-in-law. This property has been in the family over 100 years, and we no longer have any farming going on or anybody living there. My father-in-law has been trying to sell this property for the last several years, and we haven't really been successful with that, and fortunately, we had it under contract before he passed away in July. You know, so we, he wants to sell it, he wants us to sell it as a whole, not break it up into parcels. You know, we're sitting here, we're paying property taxes on this land that we're never going to use. It's only going to grow up, and we have people dumping illegally on the property. We have theft occurring on the property, and so it's something that we would really like to see the land used rather than just sitting there and growing up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any questions for Mr. Tucker? How much time is left?
Nine minutes remaining.
We have nine minutes remaining. Would anyone like to speak in support of this request? Alright, seeing no one, I will now turn to the opposition. I have Mary P. Deets, Joseph Deets, and also James Brand.
Good afternoon, Mary. Good afternoon, Mary, Mary Deets, 1589 Teague Meadow Lane, Winston-Salem, 27107. We are the, excuse me, we are adjacent to the property on the south end. The south end of the development borders our property. Approximately 90% of the development borders our property. So... So the southeast portion is adjacent to our property almost solely. Our biggest concern with it is not the development of the property, it's on the south end of the density. You have more units on the south end, which to my understanding is less than eight acres. It's little more than seven acres. I could not find on the tax map the exact difference because it's all in one plat, but because it is bisected by Teague Road completely, the south section, the south section is less than eight acres, and they're putting more units compact so tightly, as they were even saying, you can't even get trashcans out in enough space in the cul-de-sac portion, that I don't, I, I thought, I got a different number when I did eight acres and 44 units than what he said the density was. And I got a density that on the south end was large, was heavier than the zoning allows if it were, say, that section alone. So they're really heavy-end and loading the south end, whereas you've got 28 acres on the other side with a few, with a few less homes, which is nice because then they have woods around them and stuff. But there's also going to be no existing, no existing shrub or wood foliage left because that property is currently a field, which has been used for hay or corn production since I've known it. And, excuse me, so there's going to be no barrier than what they're minimally required to put in around all of those townhomes next to our property that we have horses and we have a home. Our neighbors are the same. They could not come today because the meeting was rescheduled, and she's a nurse and he's a policeman, and they couldn't get off again, scheduled to get off work again. But theirs is the same thing. Their house borders right where it's tied in the corner, where the mailboxes are going to be, where people are going to be stopping and starting their cars, right next, and the, well, no, the dumpster's going to be close to us on the proposed site. It's going to be right in our front yard, basically, the dumpster. So, and it's, it is above grade, but it does slope quite a bit. The other side, the reason they're not putting very many over there is the topography just won't allow it. It simply won't, between the power lines and the, the slope of the topography and the water and that sort of stuff. So they have to load the other side, and it's just too dense. Townhomes, fine, nice townhomes even better, but 44 units, and, and there's part of that eight acres, less than eight acres, that isn't even being used. It's the section that's just going to be common ground, and that's nothing to sneeze at to take off of it. So you're really looking at probably less than seven acres that they're going to be putting all that on. Again, I don't have the exact numbers, but I do know it's somewhere between seven and eight without the exclusion of the recreational pad. It's really dense. I don't know, I don't know how comfortable I feel, you know. Affordable housing, too, wonderful. I can afford great housing, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're working class. It's absolutely fine. I'm all for it. We have rental properties, but that's some, that's some tight stuff, and good development is wonderful, but I don't care how desperate housing needs are in an area. Poor development is worse than no development at all. And that's exactly why we've appointed people like you to represent us, to make sure that the people's interests, who are not just profiting from this, are also considered and taken into account strongly, because we've already put our roots here. He says he's a local developer. He hasn't said where the builder's coming from. He hasn't said anything about what type of provisions for HOAs and things for the dumpster. None of that has been addressed. One dumpster per side? You ask about how, you ask about how far they'd have to drive. You're talking about ones at one end on the one across the street. That's a long ways. I just think a little more planning needs to be involved to consider the existing area and the recommendation from the Development Committee, that I don't know the exact name of the people, they don't recommend multi-housing, they recommend single because of the area. So that, those things need to be considered, I feel. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Dietz, also 1589 Teague Meadow Lane, 27107. And I agree with everything she said, but I'd also like to, I'd just like to state, just in the interest of time, because I believe there's some more people who want to speak, the elevation, particularly on the south side, how, how quickly it drops off coming down to Teague Meadow Lane, our private drive below there, is really concerning, even despite the, the mention of a pipe being, to pipe it across the street and ultimately to Fiddler's Creek, is the, the ditch that's already existing along there down to our approximately 12-inch pipe under Teague Meadow Lane, I, I don't think it's going to be able to handle, and, and, you know, I'm not a professional, once you remove all that, that, that soft surface and, and put in these hard surfaces, I have a feeling we're really going to have a rainwater problem quickly.
Also with the...
And freezing on top of that, and all the things that go along with that. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. With the indication that there's no indication to widen the road, there's a lot of traffic that goes, a lot more than you would think goes by there now, and it is 55. Imagine coming and going, all those units getting out of those driveways on a curve and a slope that is a blind curve coming from the east side.
Include, including the drop in elevation, it's blind from heading, heading to the west, it's, it's blind coming from the east.
It really is bad.
It's a, it's a difficult, it's a very carefully navigated road. Thank you very much.
I think that's why they proposed single family.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
How much time is left?
Five minutes.
I can do it. All right.
My name is James Brand. I live at 733 Teague Road, which is the property, 27107, property immediately to the west of the north development. I'd like to bring up some quality of life issues first. I've, I've provided a copy of this email, both for the October and for the November meeting. If you've got it, fine, I'm just going to go over quickly what I've tried to cover. First is the traffic, which was just mentioned. An additional 200 vehicles, this is, and three trips a day for each of those vehicles will concentrate traffic in that area significantly and cause, and, and it is a, a blind curve at one spot, so that's going to cause some issues with traffic. Noise is another quality of life issue which I need to address here. With high-density housing, you're going to have a lot of noise, and it's going to be almost constant. There's an increased crime rate that also comes with high-density housing, another concern for those of us who live in the area. And then light pollution, they're going to have streetlights, I guarantee you, and they're going to be on constantly. So there, that, to the east of me, the sky will glow all the time. You won't even see the stars. Specific issues for my property, the site plan shows fill for what, what was Road B, I think is now called Great Rye Court, that goes off to the west. The fill required for that extends all the way to my property line. It's going to be quite steep. It's about a 15-to-20-foot rise above what's there now, and the steepness is going to result in a lot of stormwater runoff, which will go directly onto my property. In addition, the storm drains that they have proposed, they mentioned in the, the staff report that they drain into Fiddler's Creek. They do not, one of them actually empties about 15 feet from my property line, about 200 feet from the creek. That's another concern, because this will be coming from across, from the south side, across Teague Road onto my property. It has nowhere to go. My property's, is the lowest point on the creek, so that's where the water's going to flow. And the other issue is, I, I see no proposal for providing some, some kind of security or privacy for my property from the residents in this area. How am I, how are you going to keep them off my property? And, and in addition, this road, Great Rye Court, at that elevation, they'll be able to look right into my bedroom window. That's a concern. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Brand?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two and a half minutes remaining.
Of two and a half minutes remaining, if anyone else would like to speak in opposition. Seeing no one, I now declare the public hearing closed. Any discussion?
I had a question for staff, again, about the comment about the stormwater and where the runoff would go. Is there, no, there's not a plan at this point, but it should go directly into the creek. I guess that's what's kind of not clear and without a water plan.
Based on what was provided to us, this black line right here, it represents one stormwater runoff. The other one is this black line right here. So it was provided to us.
It's one of those things where the developer has indicated, if you, if you look at the comments in I D T...
I saw that.
Yeah, that it's going to be a low-density development. It is low-density, but again, it's also compact, so I think that the, the proof will be in the pudding whenever it comes time to actually submit the information to stormwater for the erosion control and stormwater permits, that the professional staff will review that to ensure compliance with the regulations in the city code for stormwater.
Which could include active...
Which could include active. Again, if it doesn't qualify under the low-density option, it would also be that they would have to, you know, again, you have the stormwater flow showing one way currently, you know, it would have to be to where it wouldn't cause an adverse impact on the adjoining property owner. So it has to exit this property, is my understanding, at the velocity, regardless of whether you're low-density, high-density option, it still has to exit the, the property at the same rate that it currently does.
Right, right.
So I have a follow-up question for staff. If we could speak to the concern raised about traffic, I think it was a 55-plus blind curve with this being a low-density development. I know that was in the report, but if you could just refresh my memory on any, the outcome of that initial analysis?
Just, just to reiterate what Mr. Lamb brought up, the, the capacity at level of service D for Teague Road is upwards of 17,000 trips per day, and we're below 3,000 trips per day currently. So even adding the proposed trip generation is not going to move this from a strong level of service A in terms of carrying capacity. And again, due to the utilization of the property, it's actually a lower trip generation rate than if it was to be maximized under the current single-family zoning.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, what is the pledge of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the Planning Board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposedes? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I further move the Planning Board recommend approval of W. 3598.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? That is unanimous. Passes.
And for this case and the other two cases that we will have public hearings on, just keep in mind that these will go to the elected body for a final decision. So this should go to City Council in December.
Got a time for a quick question?
Yes.
One quick question for staff. Is there a density, is there a certain density that automatically triggers active stormwater control or not? Because what I'm thinking, of course, is you've got 100 acres and your zoning allows two units per acre, so you've got two units, or 200 units, and you put them all on 10, now you've got 20 acres or 20 units per acre real density. Is there...
That's probably a question for Joe. I can't, I can't definitively answer that one way or the other. I know it's contemplated, you know, there are provisions that deal with low-density and high-density kind of scenarios in the city code. That's why, you know, we, we rely on them when we think there might be a stormwater issue that is likely to come up. We generally ask them to be here, but we didn't see it be an issue for this one, again, since it was written up as a low-density option, again, but as the write-up by Mr. Fogarty, Fogarty in the, in the review comments said that, you know, they would have to demonstrate that whenever they actually come in to get their permitting.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Arri.
Yes, this is W. 3600. Partitioner is Pilgrim Associates 2 Incorporated. The site is 7.39 acres at the west side of Pilgrim Court, both sides of Bumgarner Street. The request is a special-use limited rezoning from limited office special use to general office limited use and R M 12 limited use. So the site, as you can see, is located in G M A 2, urban neighborhoods, and it's adjacent to the University Deacon Activity Center. What you see here in the location map is this, again, is a limited office special use. To the west, the north and the south is residential mix, with the south side being a life care community. To the southwest and northwest is residential single-family, and to the east is business or non-residential zoning district. This is a transition area into a Coliseum, I'm sorry, this is part of the Coliseum mixed-use opportunity area that you see here in this piece, and staff looks at this as a transitional coming into it. You see from the aerial that north of Bumgarner Street is a developed site with a commercial building adjacent to Coliseum Drive. You can see a mixture of housing. You see multifamily again here on the west side, and to the north, and to the south, you have your life care community to single-family residential, to southwest, and to northwest, and again, commercial buildings to the east. This site is also adjacent to a major thoroughfare on Coliseum Drive and Collector's Streets on West 25th Street and Pilgrim Court. The area plan recommends mixed use north of Bumgarner Street and zero-to-eight dwelling units per acre south, south of Bumgarner Street. The G O district that is being requested has a limit of 18 dwelling units per acre, so the maximum number of units, if this, that's the route they wish to go, would be 105 units north of Bumgarner Street. The southern section here that is rezoned, that is being proposed rezon R M 12 limited use, it would have a max number of 17 units, and if it would be rezoned R M 8, it would be 11 units. So it's, it's a small area, and the difference is six units between the two. Staff did recommend this be brought in as one rezoning case, that it is a mixed-use component of the Coliseum Drive mixed-use opportunity area. This is the approved site plan for W. 3186. This is what's currently approved. As you can see, this is 3600 here. It was, a site plan has a parking lot, 3601, east of the commercial, office building you see here is also a parking area. Also part of this rezoning is this general-use limited office district that you see up here with a stormwater device kind of here in the northeast. The ordinance for 3186, as far as, I mean, just so the Planning Board is aware, the use residential building multifamily is a use that's already allowed on the site for L O, for L O S. The L O maximum density, you can see right here, is a maximum density of 12 units per acre. This is looking north at the existing building. This is looking at the entrance from Pilgrim Court, existing building is to the right. This is looking west on Coliseum Drive, subject property is on the left. This is looking north on Pilgrim Court, again, subject property is on the left. This is looking south at the proposed R M 12 site, south of Bumgarner Street. Again, this is looking east on Bumgarner Street, subject property on both sides, and this is looking south on Pilgrim Drive, subject property on the right. If you remember back from the original rezoning, this is the office building that was in between the two parking areas. North of Bumgarner Street, the requested use is residential building, townhouse, residential building multifamily, offices, storage services, retail, and general office, storage services, retail has to be indoor. It's indoor only. South of Bumgarner Street is requested cottage court, residential building duplex, residential building single-family, residential building twin home, residential building multifamily, and residential building townhouse. In summary, the request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030, as the request would allow a variety of housing options near public transit and neighborhood services, and will allow for the adaptive reuse of a commercial site. The site is within the Coliseum Drive mixed-use opportunity area, and the proposed districts would promote a mixture of office, retail, and residential uses. And due to the requested rezoning district having comparable densities as the approved uses for the existing zoning districts, staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Arri, you started the first slide you showed with the ordinance, and can you repeat that again?
Yeah, so this is the L O S. This was done, you can see, July 1st, 2013 is when it was approved. The use is, is for limited office special use, is church, religious institution, neighborhood, public library, museum or art gallery, off... library, public library, museum or art gallery, offices, again, residential building duplex, single-family, twin home, multifamily, and townhouse. These are uses that are there.
Already.
Already there. So what would, I don't know if Chris wants to speak. Okay, so what would happen is, is that this was the approved site plan. If they wanted to do any of these uses, they would have to come in as a site plan amendment. So they would have to have a site plan attached to it.
What would be the density allowed at the LOS?
The one, right, okay, the density.
12 units per acre.
Okay.
And, you know, while we're talking about that, I do want to, I actually just wrote Kirk a note. He and I spoke earlier about this, but there was some information that we did convey to the neighbors related to this project, related with GO, in that, just to be honest, for a point in time, we could not find where there was a density limitation for GO in the ordinance. Where it is in the ordinance for GO is not the same place it is in the ordinance for LO. In LO, it's underneath the zoning district. In GO, it's in the use conditions for residential building multifamily. So originally, we did convey that on the GO portion of this project, that there was no density cap. But there is a density cap of 18 units to the acre within the GO zoning district. But again, it's in the use condition for residential building multifamily, townhouse, et cetera. As you see right here, this actually comes from the LO zoning district that where it gives the cap for the multifamily. So Kirk and I have already spoken, we've got to go in and clean up the ordinance to make sure that that is in the consistent location, so that we're providing the right information to the general public whenever they ask us a question.
And is that information being relayed prior to today's meeting?
To the folks that we have spoken to, I believe.
General.
But not the general, there just wasn't any way to do that.
You did say indoor storage only, I think is what I heard you say.
That is correct. So for GO, that's the requirement. They don't allow external.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, we will.
Sorry.
Did you get to the end?
I think I did, yeah. No, I did, now I'm contemplating everything.
All right. All right, thank you.
Yep.
So we will have a public hearing on this. Again, each side will have 12 minutes. We have Tom Terrell for the proponents, and also Luke Dickey.
Hold on one second, Luke.
Or Tom.
Tom.
Oh, sorry, Don.
You and I are confused all the time.
I look to my left.
I am Tom Terrell, 230 North Elm Street in Greensboro. I am here today as attorney for both the buyer, John Reese, and the seller, John Whitaker.
I'm sorry, if you could give your zip code as well.
27401.
Thank you.
Although, of course, there are technically two applications before you at this time, and two hearings. We are approaching these, and we ask you to consider these as connected parts of the same application as Mr. Allen just mentioned a moment ago. My very first point is going to be this, is what you just heard. LOS already allows 12 units per acre. Your staff articulates very well how these applications are, in fact, compatible with the legacy plan, how they are, in fact, compatible with Northwest area plan, and they recommend both of these applications to you. Both of these applications have had considerable input from staff going back to last February. I think in a moment, you might hear that there is not perfect consistency with visions in the Northwest area plan, but the legal standard is not perfect symmetry with guidelines. Rather, the legal standard is general conformity with guidelines. And of course, there is an abundance of that in these applications. The 100,000-square-foot office building has been vacant for 10 years. 10 years of vacancy is long enough. It's unhealthy from many perspectives, and it is time to find a repurposing of that large building. On housing, every single community in the Piedmont Triad and many more throughout the southeast have trouble with their housing-meeting-market demands. As I stand here right now, there are at least 15,000 units short in this market that the market cannot seem to find ways to address. What we need is greater density in these applications, not less. Regarding transportation, staff's analysis reports no notable issues with traffic. Coliseum Drive is a major thoroughfare. It is a growth corridor. Pilgrim Court and 25th Street are Collector Streets. Your transportation staff notes, and I quote, "This section of Coliseum Drive has abundant capacity, and that 25th Street has," and I quote again, "abundant vehicular capacity." These statements are not biased opinions, rather, they are informed conclusions by unbiased professionals based on actual traffic data. Mr. Reese and his team have had countless meetings with groups in the area, with individuals. They've had calls, emails, texts, uncounted follow-up communications with people on all sides. He has offered many concessions. However, there are so many different land uses in this broader area and so many differing objectives, it is just impossible to please everybody, especially given what I think can be called the degrees of misinformation that have been floating through the community, either through private sources or through social media. The bottom line is, multiple attempts to make concessions to please everybody have just not been possible. I'd like to defer now to Mr. Dickey.
How much time is left?
Eight minutes.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Luke Dickey of Stimmel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101. I'm going to give a brief presentation, just kind of overall, just will basically cover again what Mr. Alred has already covered in this. Just as a quick reference, again, labeled Site 1, Site 2, that's a zoning case right now, 3600, which we're looking at, and you can see zoning case 3601 on the other side there. Again, on the existing zoning for the northern parcel, Site 1, we're going to call this, is LOS. So that was rezoned back, I believe, in 1992 for the office building, which is about 107,000 square feet. Particularly for this site, it was limited to just general office uses on it. Well, we're coming forward, then, the existing zoning, again, on Site number 2 was just covered. Again, the approved uses for that is the church, religious institution, neighborhood, public libraries, museum or art gallery, offices, residential uses, the duplex, single-family, twin house, multifamily, and townhomes. And again, LOS zoning does permit up to 12 units per acre. The proposed zoning for our Site 1 is going to GOL, primarily because we want to repurpose the existing building into this storage facility, so that the requested use is there is storage services, retail. But in zoning, as you know, if someone was to fall through on that and we get rid of the use of office, we'd have to come all the way back to this board again to say, hey, we want office uses to be able to use the current existing office building as an office if this gets approved without that use. So we're also keeping that use within the request. GO also allows for the uses of townhomes and multifamilies, so we would also request that because when we convert this building to a storage retail, all the site, all the parking that goes to that is not needed for the storage facility, and that can be redeveloped as something else. And we foresee that being as a potential multifamily type of uses there that front onto Bumgarner. We did work with staff on getting a condition to limit the storage uses, services, retail to be no closer than 75 feet to Bumgarner, you know, because obviously with the rezoning, we could build another building for self-storage, but that's not the intent. But we want to make sure we get some protections that we're not moving that any closer to Bumgarner there. Site number 2, then, which is on the south side of Bumgarner, again, we are keeping all the uses that were already approved on this site for residential uses, but we are removing the uses of the church, religious institution, neighborhood, library, public, museum or art gallery, and offices. So we're going from a limited office district right now to a residential district and matching the same density that was already approved for this site. In our neighborhood outreach, we always like to do that. We did have an online meeting. We sent out 130 letters to residents within the area highlighted here with the red outlines. The white dashed line is the 500-foot notification area. We did have 40-plus neighbors reach out to us, some that could not attend the meeting, but we answered their calls and just kind of go over their considerations and concerns. We did have a total of 40 that did attend the meeting. And again, as mentioned, the buyer has had multiple meetings and emails and phone correspondences with the neighbors, Mr. John Reese, in regards to that. As kind of the other case, the 3601, this kind of ties to this site, he has reached out on that site. Would they be willing to provide an option for somebody to buy that property, whether that be the Boston Thermo United Group or something like that, you know, to look at that site? And with that, once he got that kind of that thought, he said, all right, well, I'm going to turn around and I'll do that same thing for the other side, for the neighborhood, and offer that. Maybe they could buy this property if they would be interested in it as well, have an option on that. So whenever we get something that somebody's asked, we kind of turn around and make sure that we're, or make sure that we're providing the opportunities to the neighbors in that regards to kind of work through those concessions and other items. Overall, for the kind of reasons, again, to approve this zoning request is it's going to repurpose a long vacant 100,000-square-foot office building. It provides for the needed residential development opportunities on a vacant parcel, a lot area, and then the vacant property. The proposed district promotes a mixture of office, retail, and residence uses that meet the Coliseum Drive mixed-use opportunity area requirements. Again, staff has reviewed this from transportation. Coliseum Drive and West 25th Street have abundant vehicular capacity and offers alternative transportation options as a pedestrian and transit services, which is great for multifamily-type uses and density. Staff does not foresee any transportation-related issues related to this request. Staff has determined the request is in general consistency with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the area plan, and staff does recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Dickey?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. How much time left?
Three minutes, 45 seconds.
Three minutes and 45 seconds, if anyone else would like to speak in support of case 3600. All right. Yes?
May I ask one question of Mr. Dickey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Were any other uses of the existing office building other than storage considered?
No, not at the point, at this point, Mr. Reese is just interested in converting it into the storage services, retail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to the opposition. We have three, Mr. Ralston, John Wogoski, and there's a third name as well. Thank you. Jim Apple. All right. Again, if you state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please.
Yes, sure. So my name is Er Ralston, it's really is E.R.
Thank you.
2637 Arbor Place Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27104. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. I've lived in Arbor Place since 2010. I love Arbor Place. It's a great neighborhood, community. We like each other, we support each other. It's the kind of development that kind of builds a community. And many of my Arbor Place neighbors are here tonight. If you're in Arbor Place, please raise your hand, so I appreciate you being here to support me. So just a little bit more about, I forgot to do this right. I got it now. Okay. Here's our neighborhood right here. We're about 31 patio homes, developed over the past 15 years. You can see here where we're located. We're between Arbor Road and Coliseum Drive, right across the road from Arbor Acres Retirement Community. We're right between two historic communities. We've got Boston Community to our east, and we've got Renolda Park to our west. These are great communities. And together, you know, we all create a community at large, something we all need and something we all really kind of appreciate. So showing here are the areas under consideration here tonight. So you can see the W 3600, the two different tracks land there, and W 3601, which you saw in the previous slides as well. Now, we all know, as the proponents said, that there's a need for housing in Winston-Salem. And we think these areas make a great place for more housing in Winston-Salem. We would love to see these properties converted into residential, but it needs to be done in a way that makes sense and really kind of aligns with the needs of the city and the surrounding communities. So we believe that cramming the level of density that's being proposed here into this available space just doesn't make sense, is inconsistent with any, any of the surrounding neighborhoods and communities there. So this right here shows, again, the site you saw just a minute ago. This is the 3600. I've got a type on here, the bottom right-hand corner is also 3600, they're two together. I apologize for that. And here is Arbor Place right here. So you can see that this is literally in our backyard. In fact, here's some views from the back entrance of our neighborhood off of Bumgarner Street. So whatever happens in this area right here will be very, very visible to us. So we have become familiar with this area plan, which you guys all know all about and passed back in, or adopted back in 2017. And so we've become more familiar with this, with this process as well. These are some slides from, or some cutouts from that plan right here. You can see that there's a significant focus on residential development in this area. With, and in the plan, it says up to eight dwellings per unit in this particular area right here. Here, you can see the W 3600 right here, and 3601, which was shown just a minute ago as well, just a little bit further down Arbor Road and 25th Street. Now, our understanding of what would be allowable with the proposed rezoning is this. In the upper track here where the former Inmar Building is, you've got the parking lot that goes with it. That, you know, you could put other storage units in there. You could put large-capacity apartment buildings, up to 60 stories, I'm sorry, 60 feet tall. Sorry, I didn't mean to say that. And here is the, you know, what that potentially could look at. Here's the parcel land down below there. Of course, the area plan is not, you know, really a formal plan, but it does give a concept of what it could look like. With the what's proposed, it could be as many as 17, so a lot higher density than what was in area plan, and a lot higher density than any, any of the surrounding areas right here. Here's that 3601, could allow up to 47 units and could look something like this right here. Now, as was mentioned by the speakers, we did receive an outreach letter, and we did have an opportunity to learn more about this in early September. And, you know, we were, you know, curious about it and asked a lot of good questions, that kind of stuff. But a couple of things that I'd like to point out is that, you know, it does say here's a site plan. Well, there really is no site plan for this area. And we also kind of, you know, caught our attention that, you know, that it is subject to change based on neighborhood feedback. And while we have had opportunity, and I am grateful to the petitioner to give us opportunities to exchange information about the here's needs and our needs, there have been no changes to W 3600 based on our feedback. No changes to W 3600 based on our feedback. So here is a blow-up of that same area right here. Again, what was shown to us was something looking like this, partial 2, with a single-family, twin homes, other types of residential right there. But the fact is that really, there is no plan. This may be what the petitioner would like to do, but, you know, there's no guarantee that that's what's actually going to happen. And I think what's going, there's a lot of risk in making this a GOL because of all the wide potential use of that type of zoning. Let's say an out-of-town, an out-of-state apartment developer comes along, and that's the best deal or the only deal that can be made for that property. Where do you think it's going to go there? What if the only thing that, the best deal that comes is that the people that put in the storage facilities or convert the other buildings say, hey, we can put two or three other storage facilities in there, and that's the best deal or the only deal that could be made there? Where do you think it's going to go there? So, you know, considering the full range of usage, there's really too much risk with this proposed zoning for this area, and it could end up being very different from what's shown here, as something that's really contrary to the interest of, we believe, the city, the residents, and certainly to the local community. So our, you know, request to you is to, you know, deny these two requests. Stick to a max density of no more than eight units per acre, consistent with everything in the surrounding area. And before I step down, I'd just like to ask for a quick show of hands. How many in this audience oppose W 3600? How many in this audience oppose W-3600? So please do the right thing. Don't support these requests. Please support community. Don't support cramming as many units as you can into these well-established historic communities, bordered by historic communities. Thank you, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ralston?
I have a question.
All right.
With, so you and a lot of your neighbors have been talking about this for a while, you've had the meetings. What is, say, you all's ideal development of this area?
Well, the ideal for us would be, you know, residential, single-family, which is what almost all of the surrounding neighborhoods are. In the Boston area, in the Reynolds, Renolda Park area, and ours, even across Coliseum, most of it is residential, single-family. We would be okay with RM8, we would be okay with that, but going up to the level this being requested just doesn't fit into what's there.
The reason I ask is because a lot of times we utilize these areas as the transition between single-family to, say, commercial. So the shopping center is there, from what we know at this point in time, the shopping center is not going anywhere. So this parcel, or these parcels, could be that transition area with the housing, single-family, townhomes, or even multifamily. So I, I just wondered, like, is the concern more so about the indoor storage, or just the fact that it would not be single-family in general?
We actually don't have any problem with the conversion of the building to, to storage facility. We'd like to see that building get to use, get put to use. It's a nice-looking building, the outer facade of that building's not going to change, and converting it to self-storage is actually going to be minimal traffic, non-invasive to the community. We have no problem with that whatsoever. Our problem is how many potential residential units could be packed into these areas, and especially the one that's the parking lot right now that could have apartment buildings, you know, up to 60 feet tall.
Okay.
And your real concern about the residential is that it turns into what's allowed now, RM12, versus what you'd like for it to be, RM8, is that right?
So what we would like to see developed there, an intent with that site plan before was not to put in residential, but to put in parking lots. What we'd like to see is residential put in there, but consistent with all the other residential areas in there.
Looking for a down zoning, RM12 to RM8, right?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
I think I saw a question.
I had a question, just a comment. The RM12, are you looking at heights, density, or what about the RM12?
Well, you know, one of the things I failed to emphasize here is that the problem is there is no site plan. So we don't know what it's going to look like.
Yeah, and I think you're correct to recognize that.
Yeah.
It's a general use.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ralston?
Thank you.
Okay. How much time is left?
Five minutes.
All right, five minutes. Mr. John Wogoski? If you state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please.
I will. Could I get some technical help here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you catch your own?
Uh, getting to my presentation. Um, all right. I did not see yours. I apologize, I didn't see your presentation, so, one second. I've got it on the drive, if you can load it.
It's always good to come prepared.
Absolute, thank you. Not my first rodeo.
This one?
Yes.
His presentation was pretty good.
There you go. Thank you. I even brought my laser pointer. My name is John Wogoski, and I live in Renolda Park at 1140 East Kent Road, 27104. That's the corner of East Kent and Arbor Roads. And Renolda Park is a historic neighborhood designed in the '20s in the western end of the Arbor Road, 25th Street corridor, where the proposed zoning is relocated. My neighbors, and there are many of them here, and I are here today not because we are against more housing, but because we are against rezoning proposals which would change the character of our neighborhood and decrease our home values. Arbor Place that Er just described is a perfect example of planning done right. It added 31 housing units to our neighborhood, $15 million to the tax rolls, and generally enhanced the entire neighborhood. This is the sort of thing we heartily endorse. All right. Yeah.
Use the down arrow.
The down arrow. That one. There we go. As has already been mentioned, and I'll try not to duplicate what Er has talked about, but there are two pieces to this, 36, W-3600. The first is 5.6 acres, that is Zone GL. The developer in this intends to take 2.5 acres and convert it in the existing office building into a self-storage building, which is not in keeping with the Northwest Area Plan. For the remaining 3.1 acres, this petitioner has said that he plans to flip the parcel to the highest bidder and wants the broad GO-L designation without any site plans. This means the property could be covered with more storage, more offices, or even apartments of high density, up to five stories high. The second part of the petition concerns the 1.4 acres across Bumgarner Street. The Northwest Area Plan calls for this property to be low-density or RM8. The petitioner is asking for RM12, which would allow up to 17 housing units, up to three stories high, rather than the maximum of 11 units, two stories high, called for in the area plan. While this may not seem like a dramatic difference on paper, it really totally changes the appearance of the neighborhood. It could insert a three-story apartment complex versus townhouses. It is now up to the Planning Board to reject this petition. It does not follow the Northwest Area Plan, it is out of alignment with the neighborhood of single-family homes, there is no site plan, and it sets a dangerous precedent for surrounding parcels. You are asked, being asked to approve a carte blanche zoning for 7.4 acres in the middle of a historic neighborhood corridor, where the petitioner only has his interest in 2.5 acres. For the remaining acres, the petitioner is looking for a broad zoning category to increase his property value and flip the property for a profit without concern for the impact on the neighborhood. It also does not guarantee to the city that they will get the much-needed housing that is often discussed. We have a planning zoning process for a reason, and it is your responsibility to protect the character and integrity of the neighborhood. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wogoski?
One minute.
Sorry. All right, it's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Jim Apple, we have one minute left.
No, I don't need that time.
You don't? All right, so we have one minute left if anyone would like to speak in opposition.
I'm a preacher, it takes me longer than one minute just to say hello. My name is Diane Fitchew, I live at 830A, West 14th Street, 27105. I'm here today as a member of the Boston Thurman Community, and as a member of the Boston Thurman Community Engagement Roundtable, which is a partner of the Boston Thurman United Initiative. So I come not as one person, but I come as a community. And doggone it, this thing signed out, hold on. Okay. So, the Boston Thurman Community stands in opposition to the 3601 rezoning request because, one, there's no definitive housing plan or accompanying statement outlining the inclusion of affordable or mixed-income housing. Now, we appreciate the petitioner revising the density for parcel four, which faces 25th Street, and understand that an official housing plan cannot be presented until a developer is identified. But the reality is that without seeing a housing plan, we cannot support the current or any of rezoning requests for vacant land in the Boston Thurman Community. Parcel four, that is the 3601 portion of the rezoning request, is on the edge of the Boston Thurman neighborhood.
Pardon me, I'm, I'm sorry, being a preacher, you understand, I have to do it in decency and in order.
I understand.
Would you all like for her to continue?
Yes.
All right. You may continue.
Thank you, thank you. I was saying that the portion of this rezoning request is on the edge of the Boston Thurman neighborhood, which used to be accompanied by, occupied, excuse me, by black homeowners. Nevertheless, the proximity of 3601 is close to where residents in the Boston community would be concerned about the development of that land parcel. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you so very kindly.
Thank you.
All right, I think we are out of time, so with that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Any discussion from the board before we go into a motion?
Yep. What, so tell me what uses are being added. I know what can go on there. Grant the request.
On Case W-3600, the only use that is being added is the use, well, there are two uses, is the use storage services retail.
Yep.
And if you hold on one second.
And that's indoor storage only, that's no kind of, parked outside.
Correct. Within the GEO zoning district, that is a requirement, you can't have any external storage.
Thank you.
So the only use that's being added is to use storage services retail and to use cottage court.
Okay.
Cottage court was not a concept, was not a...
Didn't exist.
Ordinate, was not in the ordinance in 2013, I believe that was 2019, 2020, whenever that concept was put into the ordinance. So they're also asking for that, and that is just a form of a type of residential development that allows a little additional flexibility on design, on how you lay it out. But those are the only two uses that are being added. You know, several uses are being removed, church, museum, art gallery, library, there are a couple of other things, but those are the only two uses being added.
And there's no requested increase in density on the residential use?
Not, not from the existing LOS piece on the south side of Bumgarner, the 1.7-acre piece. It currently has the permitted use of residential building multifamily under the LOS zoning, which has a max cap of 12 units to the acre. So on that piece, there is no difference. On the piece north of Bumgarner, that has the use, that was resolved in 1992, the only use of offices, that piece would not allow for any multifamily today because it's not a permitted use on the site. With the rezoning, they would be able to realize multifamily at a density of no more than 18 units per acre under the GEO zoning.
So when Mr. Ralston presented his information, if I understand correctly, he said the area plan allowed up to eight?
That's what's recommended, again, the general recommendations of the area plan is for, for that 1.7-acre piece on the south side of Bumgarner, it has a recommendation in the area plan, zero to eight units per acre, which is low-density attached. So it would allow, it would support multifamily, but it's, it says zero to eight units per acre, again, as a recommendation.
Understood.
As has been attested, it already has the use residential building multifamily at 12 units per acre with the existing LO. If they had done a site plan amendment, if they had a site plan, it would go back through the same process, but the use would not have to be added, it would just be the site plan that would be shown to the Planning Board and ultimately to the elected body.
And what year was that area plan?
2017. The area plan was, the, the update was adopted in 2017.
Okay.
So I think that answered my question, that we would have an opportunity to review a more site-specific plan.
You, you definitely would under the existing LOS. You know, keep in mind, there are provisions in the ordinance that also, you know, depending on how the development is done in the future, if everything doesn't front onto a public street, the Planning Board will have to review and approve a site plan under the Planning Board Review provisions. It's not a public hearing, but it is a review of the site plan to ensure compliance with the ordinance provisions, and again, as a safeguard to ensure compatibility and those kind of things, there are things that the Planning Board can impose additional conditions upon. Again, if they come in with townhomes that front on existing public streets, that would not be subject to review, that would just be permit through our office, but if it does not front on a public street, it would have to come back to the Planning Board for your review as a site plan under the Planning Board Review provisions.
And help me understand, step one, step two, can you pull your mic up a little? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. I'd like some more understanding as to the potential timing of things. If step one is the conversion of, of the, of the existing office building to storage, and theoretically, step two is the development of the remainder of that piece of property for residential, doesn't that infer that the, rather, will there be a new site plan prepared for each phase, or will the property be further subdivided?
You know, again, you're asking speculative questions, I can't answer that per se. You know, in other words, you have, you have the rezoning request in, in front of you, you know, how the property owner decides to proceed with his development plan is wholly up to him. In other words, you know, again, I think I have an idea that, you know, he wants to go ahead and move forward with the storage services retail, but I believe that if Mr. Reese had been up here speaking himself, he will, he will attest he is not a residential developer, so he has no intentions of bringing the residential portion of this forward, he is going to put it on the market to someone who wants to, who's, who's in that space. So again, I can't attest to the timeframe as far as how it may come forward, but I can tell you, again, that if it comes forward and it doesn't, you know, and it doesn't front on a public street, there will be a Planning Board review that will have to come before this body.
I think we have to go back and remember, though, that what goes where...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I think we need to really go back and look at, though, any, anything that we approved could go anywhere on any of these parcels, that we really shouldn't be considering placement yet because we don't have site plans.
Well, you, right, well, and keep in mind that, you know, you have a GEO for 3600, which again, we're kind of commingling everything, so we need to be careful. The first case we're considering is Case W-3600, which is the GO-L portion, portion north of Bumgarner, and then the 1.7-acre, and again, I keep throwing that number out for some reason, that's six in my head, but the RM12L portion that is on the south side of Bumgarner, on the west side of Pilgrim. On the northern portion, the GO-L, they're requesting use storage services retail, requesting to continue to have the use offices, and then they are further requesting some multifamily uses. There is a condition of approval on that site, which says there can be no source, no, there's a condition proffered that says there could be no storage service retail uses within 75 feet of Bumgarner. So, you know, basically, no, nothing within that 75 feet north of Bumgarner on the subject property that's proposed for GO-L could be used for storage services retail. So you do have that limitation. Then, whenever you get into the RM12S piece on the south side of Bumgarner, then that is limited to the multifamily uses that are, and single-family uses that are already permitted on the LOS piece with the addition of the use cottage court.
So maybe I misunderstood something before when I was... The NGO... So maybe I misunderstood something before when I was, the, in geo, is it 18 units?
It's 18 units per acre. And one thing I wanted to just make...
And so what's the height? That height really goes up when you go to RM 18, don't it?
It's 60 feet.
Okay.
One thing I just wanted to also make sure the board is aware of, that, again, any of these specific uses are going to have their own use-specific conditions in the ordinance. So there may be requirements for open space or unit configuration or other things. For example, if someone does a cottage court versus a multifamily building versus a townhome for the residential portion, even if the actual density was the same.
For the LO, it was 12 units per acre?
Correct.
And the height on that, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Forty-five.
Is 45.
So I think the key for us is that we kind of keep things separate.
Yeah.
So let's kind of focus on the northern side first.
My last question about, my last question about the northern side is what assurance, if any, is there that the existing facade of the office building will, will not be changed?
None.
Thank you.
Again, except for the fact that, you know, they are limited to the use storage services retail in the geo district, which basically says you can't have external, it's not external access, so it will be internally accessed corridor, those kind of things. But again, they could go in and face it with stone, they could face it with brick, they could keep it the way it is. There's not anything that would, you know, that would, that would dictate the treatment except for the provisions in the ordinance that talk about the design and materials that have to be used for that use.
I ask in part because someone had mentioned, and I wrote down, the facade won't change, and I didn't feel like there was any assurance of that.
So I think I'm going to do this like past. I'm going to start here and just kind of get your opinion, and we'll move down if you don't mind. Sorry, you're on the end.
I mean, it is a challenging thing. Considering that LO already allows for 12 on the south side, I think that, that it's almost mute. So the real question becomes what that geo is, because the south side basically is already at what they want. And considering that it is in an area where we are doing that change between the commercial into more residential area, I personally think that it's, it works within what we're trying to do zoning-wise. I think that that idea is okay.
Okay. Well, first off, thank you for everyone who wrote and for being here tonight. I'm the newest member here and was always curious if everyone actually read letters and the emails, and I can assure you that everyone does, every single one. And I echo Sal in that this is, this is a challenging one. I also concur with the LOS already being previously allowed, that that is appropriate, that that makes sense. And the same with the geo. I think it being a transitional area in alignment with the mixed-use Coliseum Drive, as that area continues to grow and to become even more mixed-use into the future, that this does present a unique opportunity, not only to address our high vacancy, commercial vacancy rate in our community, which we're all aware of, but also, I think, I want to make a note that this came up in many of the letters of concern about sort of bookending these residential, these historic neighborhoods. I think that this, there is a clear demarcation from these empty lots, so I appreciate and was really, felt really good today to hear everyone agree to some form of residential, to hear that echoed, because this does present an opportunity to sort of bridge the gap, if you will, and build more community amongst these historic neighborhoods. I really appreciate that feedback today.
Thank you, Lindsay. Okay. I agree. You both said about the LOS to RM 12, and that seems appropriate, given us already what could be done there. Surprising to me about the GOL space is that there wasn't, like, overarching opposition to storage building, indoor storage. I thought that's what everybody was going to fuss about, but surprise. I do think that it is important that this piece of property, we have to understand, and it's been said, the property's been vacant for 10 years. I previously worked in economic development. Office space is not flying off the bookshelves right now. So it's, it may be unlikely that office is going in there anytime soon. It seems that some of the resident neighbors are not totally against indoor storage, so that fits with this proposal. Personally, I think the area, this is perfect for a transition from single-family to Coliseum, to the busier row, to the shopping center, and the uses that have been requested are fitting. And I do want to make a comment here that I've made before, and I'll probably have to keep making, is that because there is the opportunity for new development, it does not mean that it does not, it will not be able to stay within the character of the neighborhood. I do think, people often think if it's new, it cannot be within character. Character being the style, being the elevations, being the heights. So there is opportunity for it to actually complement the area, and so I do think it is appropriate.
And I'll be supportive of the petitioner's position. I think it's great reuse, redevelopment opportunity, take 100,000 square foot empty building and do something that is certainly acceptable to the neighborhood with that, with that piece of it. I think the RM 12 will not be a disaster at all. I think it is, like Walter referred to it, a good transition with, considering what's surrounding it. So, and for other reasons that, that have been stated, I'm supportive of petitioner's position.
Thank you.
This keeps getting easier because you're all making all these good, good points. I just want to echo Lindsay's point. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you for making your voice heard. Walter made a very, very good point, which is oftentimes, new development is scary, particularly when nobody can show you what it's going to look like, right? I mean, that's, that's a leap of faith that you're being asked to make as a community, and I don't think any of us sitting up here take that lightly. But your point is kind of made by two different cases that we've heard tonight, that we've heard the same opposition in two vastly different parts of Forsyth County. The case we heard about multifamily off of Teague Road is a vastly different part of the world in a lot of ways in terms of density and everything else than Coliseum is. And so we hear oftentimes, it's going to be different, and it's going to change things. And we're going to face this more and more because this is, this is really an infill development challenge, right? We've got a developer that has part of a larger tract that he wants to do something with, but he's got to make it economically feasible by letting somebody else do something with the rest of it. And we're going to struggle with that more and more as we confront infill development over the next 20 or 30 years. But to me, that's one of the keys of providing some of this missing housing, and I think it can be done, and I think the market will drive it to fit into the neighborhood in a way that you might be, might be surprised about. But I get that it's hard when you don't know what it's going to look like.
Well, I would feel, and I agree with most things that have been said, but what I have a concern about in listening, trying to figure out how you could possibly do this, I have a problem with the RM 18, the height on that. That's not something you can hide. You can change the design or the layout, but when you get something that much taller and bigger in a community, you can't really hide it. I understand the purpose of, I understand the geo was to get the retail allowed, and the other, the other LO went to RM 12. So I'm having, I would, could not see myself supporting that 60-foot allowed in that area. If there's some way to, to limit where that is allowed, I don't know how you could work that out, or if they would be willing to do that, but I personally really would not vote for something that's going to put 60 feet in a residential area like that.
Everybody awake? I feel really odd in that there are some things, very personally, that I dislike about this first request, but I don't think it has to do with what I personally like. I think it has to do with the ordinance and the impact on the, on the neighborhood, and leave my wish list back out in the car. Having said that, I think the retail storage use is a tail wagging the dog in this case. I too am surprised to hear no opposition to it. That would have been my primary opposition. I think this community is entirely too lenient on where we continue to allow retail storage, but that's not the issue before us. I'm also a lot more, I, I, I feel like more residential is more desirable than more commercial. The shopping center we're speaking of is transitioning itself away from retail, and for good reason, for economic reasons. I'm, I'm divided, so I'd like to call for a vote, and let's just be done with it.
We've got to have a motion first.
Okay. Yeah.
Please keep in mind that the motion and vote that's made tonight, this will go before city council. I think this is what makes community great, is conversation and discussion. Thank you all for your emails, your letters. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose this?
And, Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W 3600.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose this?
Nay.
All right. Five, two.
How did you vote on the second one?
Approval.
Okay. So six, two.
Six, two.
Okay.
All right. So we've, and I know the audience has been here as well, we've been drinking, not alcohol, of course. If you don't mind, I would like for us to take a three-minute break.
Sure.
All right. And we'll be right back.
Folks, keep in mind, W 3601 still has to be heard, so that, that decision was just on the first case, so, sorry, 3600, 3601 has not been heard. Sorry, 3600, 3601 has not been heard.
We're now here, uh, Starred, now to you.
Yeah, so this is case W 3601. Petitioner, the petitioner is Pilgrim Associates Two Incorporated. The site is 3.98 acres on the north side of West 25th Street, west of Kirkwood Street. The request is special use limited rezoning from limited office special use to RM 12 limited use. So like before, this is in GMA Two Urban Neighborhoods, and it is part of the, um, apologize, the clone, uh, yeah. Lost my train of thought, this is part of the opportunity zone of the Colonial Circle, uh, Colonial Drive, Opportunity Zone.
Coliseum Drive.
Coliseum Drive. I'm losing it, yes, I apologize.
A little snazzy right there.
All right, so this is areas you can see here surrounded to the north and the west by, uh, non-residential, to the south is a life care community, and to the east is single-family residential. The aerial has, this is a vacant lot, and wooded lot, again, you can see that these are non-residential buildings, again, to the north and the west, and single-family residential to the east. The area plan has this recommended as mixed use with a density of eight dwelling units per acre along the West 25th Street, with densities closer to, higher densities closer to Coliseum Drive. So we looked at this and what that would be, the difference in number of units allowed between RM 12 and RM 8 is 16, with a maximum number of units for RM 12 is, uh, 46, and if it was RM 8, it would be 30. Again, this is just like last time, um, the approved site plan, this was a parking lot, which you can see here. This is also part of the rezoning request, but this is a general use district of limited office. And again, these are the uses that are allowed in the limited off special, limited office special use, so residential building multifamily is one of the uses that is allowed. This is, again, density of LO is 12 units per acre, so the petitioner is not asking for an increase in density with the RM 12 zoning, rezoning request. This is looking at the subject property. This is looking east along West 25th Street, subject property is on the left. This is looking west along West 25th Street, subject property on the right. One of the things you can see here is this has a sidewalk connection, and it's hard to see from far away, but there's a bus stop location up here at the intersection. This is looking south across West 25th Street from the subject property. And the requested uses here is residential building duplex, residential building single-family, residential building twin home, residential building multifamily, and residential building townhouse. So this site, in summary, this site is within a Coliseum Drive mixed-use opportunity area, which supports a mixture of residential and commercial land uses. The request is generally consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the Northwest Winston-Salem Area Plan update. The request would allow for the redevelopment of a vacant site with excellent access to multimodal transit and other services. So there is a condition that's being requested of a 20-foot type-three buffer yard adjacent to single-family residential properties, with that and the fact that this zoning district is comparable density is what's already approved. Staff does recommend re, uh, approval.
Thank you, Mr. Harret, any questions for Mr. Harret? All right, thank you so very kindly. We will have a public hearing, uh, for case 3601. As a reminder, uh, 12 minutes on each side. Please state your name, address, and zip code for the record. We have Tom Terrell, Luke Dickey, Luke Dickey, and Sandra Stinson.
Good afternoon again. Again, I'm Tom Terrell, 230 North Elm Street in Greensboro, 27401, representing the buyer, John Reese, and the seller, John Whitaker. I don't need to repeat all the points I made earlier, but I would like to emphasize a few. I don't know if anybody will be speaking later about requesting eight units per acre, uh, in reference saying the Northwest Area Plan, but in fact, that is really not on the table. It's not before you, uh, this afternoon, because it is, there is already an allowed density, as we've already established, of 12 units per acre. Second, everybody who purchases and entitles property is not the developer. In this case, Mr. Reese is the buyer, he is not the developer. There will be a future developer or developers who will come along. They will have to work within the confines of all of the restrictions that are posed in this special use, uh, district, and they will come back for site plan approvals at that time. I would like to point out that the difference between what some might ask for as the requested zoning of RM 8 versus the allowed use by right of RM 12 is about 15 or 16 units spread out over four acres. It is a density that would not even be perceivable, could not be perceived even by the most observant driver who was traveling on the adjoining Major Thor affair or Collector Streets. In fact, these are the types of changes in density that even the most sophisticated transportation modeling software would either measure the delays at intersections either in the minor tenths of a second, if those added delays could be picked up by the software at all. So, yeah, it's negligible, uh, at the most. Uh, at this point, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Dickey, who will describe, among other things, what some of the concessions are that have been made to adjoining neighbors.
Good, good afternoon. Luke Dickey, Estima Associates, 601 North Trey Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Uh, so this is just going to be basically a carryover from the last case of the 3600. Um, I just want to point out again, uh, we kind of gone over and looked at that, so we're going to focus again now on the eastern side site, which we have called the 25th Street. Existing zoning again on this side is LOS and LO. Uh, we've already established that this was zoned back in 2013, based for 183 parking spaces. Uh, the approved uses are listed there, as you can see, so that, it also still includes the church religious institution, uh, neighborhood, uh, the public library, the museum or art gallery, offices, and then you see the residential uses at 12 units per acre. Again, this request here is to go to RM 12L. Uh, we've dropped all the other uses except for the residential uses, and then maintaining the 12 units per acre. So, uh, this is just kind of simplifying that zoning down to just a residential multifamily district. Again, as mentioned with that, maximum permitted units would be a total of 46. Uh, then RM 8 is roughly 30 units, so again, that's a 16-unit delta between the two. Um, and we originally had submitted this as RM 18, um, and so we had concerns mentioned with that density coming from the neighborhoods and, and working with planning staff in regards to that. So again, we've dropped that down as a concession now to RM 12. Uh, so that's one concession that we have made. There's also concerns, kind of mentioned, in the original rezoning of the RM 18, we had life care community and nursing care institution was part of that request. That has also been dropped as part of this, so we're just sticking with these residential uses here. Um, and then, uh, we've also then coordinated on the consideration of the building height, so RM 12 currently is 45-foot limitations for the height, but I know there's an ordinance, uh, going through that may be able to increase that height to a different height, so we've agreed to add a condition saying in this site specifically, uh, that we will maintain that 40-foot building height for this RM 12 district. Um, and then, uh, also there was concern with this being a budding now directly adjacent to single-family residences there on the east side. Uh, we've agreed to an additional buffer, uh, condition to beef that buffer up, uh, to a, instead of the type-two buffer, we've gone with the type-three buffer to increase that, uh, there for additional screening. Again, this was part of that, uh, neighborhood outreach that we had done, so we, we discussed both of these cases in, in one meeting. Um, and then it's already been mentioned again, uh, kind of the communications that's happened back and forth then between groups, uh, through that, that process. Uh, again, this one is, you know, it, it provides for needed residential development opportunities on a vacant property. Um, again, we have reduced the request originally from RM 18 to RM 12. Uh, we did the conditions limiting the height and additional buffering then to protect. Uh, transportation staff had looked at this, again, on West 25th Street, uh, with abundant vehicular capacity and offers alternative transportation options. And you saw that there's a bus stop, uh, very close to the site and just when there's that area there, so they did not see any transportation-related issues related to this request. Uh, staff has determined, again, that this request is generally consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the area plan, and, and staff does recommend approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, how much time is left?
Six and a half minutes.
Six and a half minutes, uh, Ms. Stinson? Okay, you're going to speak on, all right, if you don't mind, just come into the podium and state your name and address and zip code for the record.
Good evening, I'm, um, Patricia Caldwell. Address is 612 West 23rd Street, and the Boston, uh, community. I'm speaking, uh, opposing the...
Zip code, I'm sorry.
Sorry. My name is Patricia Caldwell.
Oh, are, are you in opposition?
I'm in opposition.
Okay, we're, we're on supporters right now, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
You can come back up, yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else here in support of 3601? All right, if not, I will now turn to the opposition. We have, um, Earl Ralston, um, John Wogoski, Jim Apple, and also Patricia Caldwell. All right? It's time, give us your zip code, too.
Okay, my name is Patricia, Sandra Patricia Caldwell. Address is 612 West 23rd Street, uh, 27105.
Thank you.
And I, uh, we are in opposition with this, uh, I have not, we are for affordable housing. Housing is required, and we, we need more houses in the area, but what the concern is, is the, it was the RM 12, but if, we've stated that it's the RM 12, not the RM 8, so we're okay with that. But we would like to have homes, if there are homes, that are within the architectural design of our historical community, because to build houses that are not conform to the community does not compensate the community, and we're historical. And also, as far as the transportation, uh, the communities are already talking about a transportation problem on West 25th and a Half Street, for 25th year off to 25th and a Half Street, and residents are opposed to the, the traffic that is created and the speed that is required. So that is something that needs to be looked at as well. Even though it is within the transit area, there's also problems with transportation. On the area further down Arbor Acres, they have the speed bumps, and the opposite, there is not a speed bumps. So there would be some changes and would be some things that need to be considered for the community. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Caldwell? All right, thank you, how much time is left?
Ten and a half minutes.
Ten and a half minutes. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Hi, Chris. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Cynthia Scar, 1050 Arbor Road, Winston-Salem, 27104. I just would like to, um, uh, support my neighbors. This whole, um, proposal started out as, as one. It was going to be, all three parcels were going to be together. And so we formed a coalition with, uh, Reynolda Park, Arbor Place, and Boston Thurman, because we thought we faced similar problems. The density being higher than what is in the representative in the neighborhood, um, the closest RM 12 is, is almost a mile away, uh, in Ramsgate, and that, as you saw from the photographs, that does not represent the quality of homes that are in any of these neighborhoods. Um, we were all concerned about the traffic, because the two parcels that don't front Coliseum, that traffic's going to dump onto 25th Street and Arbor Road. We've had a terrible traffic problem. Um, we have been successful on the, uh, Arbor Road section of getting the speed bumps and the stop signs, and all that would be undone with this traffic that's going to come off of both of these parcels. Um, we're worried about safety, speed with the children, we're worried about trash, and we're also worried about the historic neighborhoods. And I'm especially worried about Boston community. We were, we supported them in their endeavor to get a historic marker in their neighborhood. Those houses are beautifully built, architecturally important, and if this property is allowed to be developed into multifamily, uh, RM 12, developers are going to come in and they're going to buy up those houses, and they're going to tear them down, and they're going to build more. And we all know that's going to happen, because that's going to be the most profitable thing. And that would just be a tragedy for our community. So I would like to support my neighbors in opposing this, thank you.
How much time is left?
Eight and a half minutes.
Eight and a half minutes, would anyone else like to speak in opposition? All right, if you approach the podium and state your name, address. Take your time. Can someone make sure she doesn't help her, please? Okay, thank you.
My name is Adrian Polycron, P as in Peter, O-L-Y-C-H-R-O-N. I live at 1065 East Kent Road, 27104. You've heard everything that we want, we're asking for. I don't think it's anything that's out of the realm of you're considering our plea. I did want to say one thing about the traffic, which has really not been... I did want to say one thing about the traffic, which has really not been brought up, except Cindy just now. In order for people to get from the eastern part of Winston-Salem across University, and then all Arbor Acres, just built 69 more units in there, in Arbor Acres, then we've got all these areas that you know about, and there is more than just Kent Arbor Place. There are two other developments before you get to East Kent Road. All of those people, only way you can get down, well, of course, you can go to Arbor and then go north on Arbor, but to get to Miller Street through way for Scythe Hospital, Baptist Hospital downtown from those areas is to come down 25th Street onto Arbor and then turn left onto East Kent Road. And it's a winding, two-lane old road that's been there since Mrs. Reynolds made Reynolda Park years ago, and it's dangerous. Now, we did finally, after two years, get permission from you and the city council to put in the speed bump. There are speed humps, they're not big ones, they're just humps, to try to get the traffic to go another way. These new apartment buildings and, and it's, by the way, this is, they're calling it low-income housing. I don't know what that means for sure, but anyway, the more, the traffic is going to be substantial. Now, coming on from these new apartments, they're going to very likely cut through Kent Arbor Place to avoid the speed bumps that are on Arbor Road, which is going to create a hazard in Arbor Place. And then, more than likely, they're going to come down Arbor Road, turn left on East Kent, and there's going to be even more substantial traffic. I just wanted to point that out and make you very aware of, this is a hazard for our neighborhood and, and just for the traffic problem in that area. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. How much time is left?
Five minutes, 45.
Five minutes and 45 seconds left. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition?
My name is Cynthia Antoun. I live at 1200 East Kent Place Lane. So I'm in one of the communities that is right beside, off of Arbor Road and right beside Arbor Place that's being talked about and adjacent to Reynolda Park, a very pretty area. Don't have much to add. I think a lot's been discussed, but I do want to reiterate the traffic concerns. I live right beside a four-way intersection that has a stop sign. It's a four-way. And there are countless times, if you literally stand there and watch cars go through the intersection, it's multiple, multiple times an hour that cars blow through the stop signs without, without stopping. Excuse me. I just wanted to reiterate that. I think it's important, and I think it will only increase if more traffic is to come through. Thank you.
And could you repeat your last name again, please?
It's A-N-T-O-U-N.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just correcting, and your zip code, you didn't...
27104.
Thank you. Thank you. How much time is left?
Five minutes.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? All right. Well, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. I know we've had kind of a blending of both cases. Is there any discussion?
I had something that I did want to bring up. I'm here in response to Ms. Caldwell and also Ms. Fitch, who I believe, who spoke in the last case. There was discussion in both about affordable housing, mixed incomes, low incomes. You know, I think both neighborhood, well, all of these neighborhoods, Reynolda Park, Arbor Place, Boston Thurman are very different neighborhoods. They're all neighbors, of course, but affordable housing...
Excuse me.
Can you, I'm sorry. Affordable housing is a very important issue, like we say, all communities, particularly this one, and we all know this. Unfortunately, for us as a planning board, we have to vote on land use, and so affordability is not something that we take into consideration, or the price of properties or homes or future developments, but I do think it is very important. I think we've discussed it often. Many of us are really in support of it, but just want to make sure it is known that we can't make that decision, but also that the land use does not determine what types of properties do end up on the land.
And to echo that, the same is the case with architectural styles. We cannot control what the architectural style of a community is going to be.
Or traffic. We have no control over the construction of new roads, unfortunately.
Okay, so, you know, I think is, I think is interesting, one thing I heard was the traffic situation, the speeding. I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but I've always found it interesting that you come down 25th and in the middle of the street, it changes names, and there are amenities on one end and doesn't seem to be the same amenities on the other end. So I don't know if there's anything that can happen, what needs to happen, but I would like my voice to be heard, that I think amenities should be the same on both sides of the street. You have speed bumps on one side, you know, let's fix this. Everything else I definitely agree with, but I did want my voice to be heard on that. If there's no other discussion, yes, sir.
I was just going to add to your remark. I would also highly encourage anyone that's experiencing speeding traffic, people violating stop signs, call the police department, report it, or the police or transportation, and report it. Believe me when I say, years ago, I got stopped on Iron Valley Road, coming home from church, speeding, and the officer explained that he was there because the neighbors called. So let your voice be heard in more than one place.
All right. If there's no other discussion, would anyone like to make a motion? What is the pleasure of the board in this case?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board to find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board to recommend approval of Deputy 3601.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Thank you. That is unanimous.
Just blows around the whole time.
Again, thank you all again. This case will go before city council.
Mr. Chairman, award, that does bring us to the end of the agenda under staff report. Just a reminder that you will not have work session in either November or December. The next thing I will do is turn to Mark Alred, who will give you...
I'm sorry. If you all could, we're still meeting. It's all right. Let's give a moment.
Okay. That's fine.
They've been sitting a long time. Mr. Harrison, it's good seeing you, sir.
Good seeing you, too.
Can you make sure she gets down the steps?
Certainly will.
Thank you.
Don't get old.
Better than the alternative, right?
Plenty of it to go around, right? Starting over, just a reminder, first thing under staff report is no work session in either November or December. The second thing is I will turn to Mark Alred, who'll give you your December zoning case preview.
Yes, we have a, I would say it's not the busiest, but a busy December planning board case. We've got 13 total items, two final development plans, six rezoning cases, one text amendment to planning board reviews, and one preliminary subdivision, along with one subdivision withdrawal request.
And a partridge in a pear tree.
That's right. We will transition next to Amy, who'll give you just kind of where we are on the comp plan, and I believe she has some statistics up there on, on the screen as well, so.
As you can see on the screen there, we're just shy of 2,900 survey responses that were over 100,000 data points, so basically every participant is giving approximately about 40 data points. So lots of data there for us to look through. We have about 50% participation rate, so about 50% of people are completing the survey and rest are just sort of clicking on it and then clicking off, which is very good. According to MetriQuest, usually get about 20, 20 to 30%, so us having 50 is very good. Just looking at the website there, I won't go through all these, but we've had 2,600 unique users, visitors to the website, which is great, and then the site sessions is over 3,000, and then we've had over 4,000 page views. We just completed our October meeting schedule. We had nine meetings with a total of 134 attendees with that. And then, we have determined to have two additional, decided to have two additional meetings next week, basically in some areas where we didn't get great participation in the in-person meetings. So it will be Wednesday, the 15th and Thursday, the 16th. The 15th will be at Sprague Street Community Center, and the 16th will be over at the fairgrounds at the Home Garden Building, which is gate nine entrance there. Both meetings will be 5:30 to 7:30, same format that we have done for all the other meetings, the same dot exercises, everything like that. And we have kept the survey open. We extended it out to past these meetings, so if folks show up at these meetings that haven't taken the survey, they'll still have a short window to do that and provide their input that way.
Mr. Chairman, and again, there's no expectation that a planning board member be there. If someone wants to show up, that's fine, but again, we, we kind of looked at the information and said, hey, let's go ahead and do two more while we're kind of hot and know what we're doing, and it's, we don't have to relearn it. So we're doing two more sessions, again, just to make sure that anyone that wants to participate can, and then, you know, that will wrap up this phase. If there aren't any questions on that, I will move on to... Have y'all formally met Rory on our staff? I was not at the last work session, so Rory, if you would stand up and introduce yourself.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Hello. Hope you all are well. Still getting used to this microphone. I am the new project planner here with the land use administration team, and I look forward to working with you and speaking with you and presenting to you going forward. It's nice to have a good introduction to all of you tonight. I look forward to making some presentations in the future.
Rory, I know it's late in the hour, but could you give us a little, tell a little bit about yourself, so we'll know?
Wow, for sure. I grew up in Oak Ridge, North Carolina, about 25 minutes east of here, and I got my undergraduate and graduate degrees from UNC Chapel Hill. I graduated with my master's in public administration back in May. Thank you. Yeah, I think I knew when I graduated, I wanted to stay close to home and make an impact on the local community. So when I got the offer from Winston-Salem, I really, I really jumped at, that was my number one choice. So I'm very glad to be here, glad to be here with this great team. Yeah. Anything else you'd like me to do?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
The only other thing that I have is just a reminder, we will send out a notification prior to the next meeting, but as it is our December meeting on the 14th, if you would just come a little early, enjoy a little heavier hors d'oeuvres for the holidays, and be able to thank you for your hard work over the past year. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I am finished. Oh, well, let me say one more thing. With Lindsay today, we do have our final photo taken, so we will, we will get our photos on the website, and I've been, it's my understanding from our graphics person that that will be handled on Mondays, so we will finally have up-to-date photos of all planning board members, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for putting that on the record. I appreciate that.
So again, I'd like to thank Councilmember McIntosh for her presence again tonight. I think the staff, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving if I don't see you before then. And is there anything else for the good of the order?
I know I will not be here for the December meeting. We're going to be out of the country, so I wish an incredibly happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas to you all, and I look forward to being back with you in January.
Enjoy.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We'll have our motion to adjourn.